Morning, everyone. We're going to start now. They asked all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. The members will take their seats. We will start. Thank you very much. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Dr. Philip D.W. Cray of the Lutheran Theological Seminary, I'm sorry, of Philadelphia. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Cindy Bass. I would ask all guests and visitors to please rise.
Thank you, President Clark.
Thank you.
In the Lutheran tradition, we value and respect good government. And because of the good government in this city, the Lutheran Theological Seminary at Philadelphia has been able to invest forty million dollars in its campus and regularly contributes about three to four million to Northwest Philadelphia. And we're thankful for good government, this city council which has approved that, the Honorable Sherrell Parker, who's our representative, Cindy Bass, who's our councilwoman. And personally, before I pray, I just want to say that my wife and I have five children. All five have gone to Philadelphia Public Schools, and all of them are doing well. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this glorious day. Signs of renewal after a long winter. Signs of hope for a renewed city, a city we love. We ask your blessings upon our mayor, the president of this council, this city council, and all who lead this wonderful city of Philadelphia. We pray that you protect all those who stand in harm's way for our safety, especially our police and firefighters. We also pray that this great council deliberates with justice and fairly for this city. May their decisions be especially helpful for the children of our public schools and the vulnerable for whom you care. I give you thanks for each and every member of this city's leadership, for their dedication and service. May they know that we love them, and we honor them, and respect them for all they do. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for those inspiring words. Council ladies. Thank you so much. The next order of business. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 3, 2014. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 3, 2014, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second at the Journal of the Meeting of April 3, 2014. Stand and approve. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leaves of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman...oh.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there is no request for leaves of absence.
Thank you very much. Folks, could I ask that the voices be lowered a little bit, please? Thank you. We're trying to conduct business. At this time, I will dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down here today to witness their government in action. We hope that your stay here today is a pleasurable one and an educational one, and we hope that you really enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. So again, thank you for coming down this evening. Before we recognize our presentations, I would like for us to recognize, put a moment of silence for a true patron, great citizen of the city of Philadelphia, a person that we've all grown up reading. We'd like to get a moment of silence for Chuck Stone. If we can, can we all please rise? Thank you all very much. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko, who presented a resolution congratulating Marlene Trice on receiving the Pennsylvania AARP Andrews Award for Community Service. With Ms. Trice and those accompanying her, please join the councilwoman at the podium. And we also have a very special guest, our good friend, State Representative Parker, and the Philadelphia delegation leader, who's been extremely helpful to us over the years. Thank you for being here, Representative.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One day, I was reading my AARP magazine, and I turned to one of the sections, and there was my good friend and constituent, and a large story about her receiving the Pennsylvania Artist Award, which is named in honor of the founder of AARP. And I got so excited and certainly wanted to make sure that we recognize her for the work that she does, not only in the food bank that she runs out of State Representative Sherrell Parker's office, but for all the wonderful other work she does in the community, helping our constituents not only in the 50th Ward, but all over the Northwest and beyond. Because she's a loving mother and a good Christian, and she loves the work that she does. So I am just so pleased that we are able to be here today to recognize and congratulate Marlene Trice on receiving the Pennsylvania AARP Andrews Award for Community Service. Whereas, Marlene Trice is the founder of the Kitchen of Love Distribution Center, which monthly provides free nutritious groceries, including fresh meats, vegetables, and fruits to more than 500 residents of Philadelphia. And for more than three decades, Mrs. Trice has dedicated much of her time to ensure that those in need have access to the precious necessities of life. And whereas, the AARP Andrews Award was named after AARP founder, Dr. Ethel Percy Andrews, and the award recognizes outstanding individuals who are making their communities better in ways that are consistent with AARP's mission, vision, and commitment to volunteer service, and who inspire others to volunteer. And whereas, through her work, Mrs. Trice exemplifies the spirit of Dr. Andrews and the AARP mission by her tireless commitment to providing a helping hand to the community by catering countless neighborhood events, including all of mine, grocery shopping for elderly residents, including trips to medical appointments, organizing soup kitchens for the homeless, and toy drives for the underprivileged children, all while juggling the responsibilities of her job and family. And whereas, annually, Mrs. Trice organizes a Thanksgiving dinner sponsored by State Representative Sherrell L. Parker, where numerous people from throughout Philadelphia and South Jersey come together to feast over a true homemade meal, and she is an active member of Taylor Memorial Church, a block captain on Forest Avenue for over thirty-four years, and the wife of Mr. Clarence Trice for more than thirty years, where the union has blessed her as a mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother. And whereas, AARP's commitment to volunteer service can be traced back to Dr. Andrews' founding vision and motto, quote, "To serve, not to be served," end of quote. And according to AARP, Pennsylvania State President Jim Palmquist, Marlene's tireless commitment to her community serves as an inspiration to others and makes her particularly worth recipient of this award. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor Marlene Trice on receiving the Pennsylvania AARP Andrews Award for Community Service. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Marlene Trice as evidence of the sincere sentiment of this legislative body. It is introduced by Marion Tasko and supported by all members of city council. And we want to sincerely thank Marlene for all the hard work she does for us in the community. And she does a great job in providing us our lunches for Election Day, I'm sure to the consternation of Committee of Seventy, who thinks that we're buying votes by feeding people. But she does a great job, and we love her, and she really keeps the community well-fed and helps people throughout the community. So, Marlene, thank you so much. I've been waiting a long time to do this, because the article, she got the award last year, but problems intervened, and we couldn't get it done. But we're glad to always say thank you for the good work that you do in this city, and particularly in the Northwest. Thank you, my dear.
Chair recognizes Ms. Trice. Want to ask Representative Parker, please give us some remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Just want to take this opportunity to wholeheartedly say thank you to Ms. Marlene Trice for the work that she does. You know, there is a misnomer about Northwest Philadelphia, and that is, if you live in zip code 19150, no members of that community are in need of assistance. It goes to show you that many of the cuts that we've seen nationally, statewide, and even here on the local level, are actually getting to the pocketbooks of regular people across the city. And Marlene makes sure that the people throughout Northwest Philadelphia have access to fresh fruits, vegetables, and all kinds of meats that you can think of, particularly during their time of need. So today, we pay homage to her. And thank you, Councilwoman Tasko, Council President Clark, and all members of council for this opportunity today.
Thank you. And Ms. Trice, please give your remarks.
Good morning. First, I'd like to give honor to God, who's first in my life. Thank you, Council President Clark. I humbly thank Councilwoman Marion Tasko for honoring me and the Kitchen of Love with this resolution. For almost twenty years, I, along with the hosts of dedicated volunteers, have been serving families in need through the city. We moved our program to the Northwest three years ago, and to the district office of State Representative Sherrell Parker. Through this partnership, we have been able to serve more than 500 families a week with nutritious food and produce distribution. As a result of this union, our site has become a one-stop shop for families in need. The Kitchen of Love addressed the rising issue of hunger among the residents. While upstairs in Representative Parker's front office, residents have access to valuable resources and easier things to accomplish with things listed to do, from issues with DPW to the housing and quality of life concerns. I am blessed to have this opportunity to help others gain access to their basic needs, some of which we often take for granted. I thank my husband, Clarence Trice, my children, Tahava Trice, my grandchildren, Donnie Caldwell, and Dante Lowery. And I also thank my volunteers who arrive early on Mondays and Thursdays and Fridays to help me carry out my mission of Kitchen of Love. As a child of God, I wake my wards in heaven. Today, I am truly here to help those who may not otherwise know where to turn. I truly appreciate this recognition. Thank y'all very much.
Council ladies. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien, who presented a resolution recognizing April 2014 as Autism Awareness Month. Would Terry Matthews and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman O'Brien, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilman Jones. And also Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Friday, we recognized a real leader, not only in autism, but helping human services at the school district of Philadelphia, Estelle Richmond. And she was given the school district's autism award. And I'd just like to also recognize her efforts in creating the Bureau of Autism Services. And we also have with us Nina Wall, who is the director of the Bureau of Autism Services in the back. Estelle provided great leadership in making Pennsylvania the leader in autism research and translating that research into programmatic responses. And I can literally say that we are at least ten years ahead of everybody in the United States. And while everyone else is focusing on children living with autism, we have to remind everyone that children spend eighty percent of their lives as adults. And the programs that we're creating in Pennsylvania deal with individuals on the autism spectrum across all ages. And I'm excited to announce that yesterday, we had the leadership meeting for the Philadelphia Autism Project. And I'd like to recognize that Terry Matthews is here. She's going to serve. You'll hear from her in a little while. On the Autism Project, you have the Drexel Institute for Autism, who is going to drive this engine, both from a research standpoint and from an epidemiology standpoint, and all the other leaders that comprise this powerful engine that is going to attack autism, are all going to be part of this wonderful conversation. It's never been done on a municipal level before. And we are very excited about this, and there was so much energy coming out of that room. I'm surprised that William Penn didn't do a 360 on top of the dome. But if you have an opportunity, the Drexel Institute Mobile Reach Van is on the north side of City Hall. And it is symbolic, as well as a substantive approach, to recognize and addressing the underserved families in the city of Philadelphia. It will provide identification, assessments, and supports for individuals living with autism in all neighborhoods of the city of Philadelphia. And finally, the facilitator at yesterday's meeting recognized an article, periodical, that identified Philadelphia as one of the top five cities in the United States to live, if you have a family member living with autism. The exciting thing is, that as powerful as that recognition is, we are going to build on that success, and we are going to turn the autism conversation upside down, as Terry Matthews is doing with Jaden's Voice. So I'm thrilled with that opportunity, and I'd like to present a citation recognizing Autism Awareness Month here in city council, and present it to Terry Matthews at Jaden's Voice. And I'll begin, "Whereas, April is National Autism Awareness Month. Autism, also known as autism spectrum disorder, describes a group of brain disorders that affect social interactions, communication, and other behaviors, and..."
Whereas, in 2014, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention estimated that one in every sixty-eight children, that is, one in forty-two boys and one in one hundred and eighty-nine girls in the United States are on the autism spectrum. And whereas, the CDC's findings demonstrating a significant increase in the prevalence of autism echoes the findings of the Pennsylvania Autism Census Project led by the ACERT Collaborative at Drexel University, which found that the number of Pennsylvanians with autism receiving services nearly tripled from 2005 to 2011. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Autism Census Project found that in Pennsylvania and Philadelphia alone, the number of individuals receiving services has more than doubled, and statewide, individuals with autism are experiencing alarming rates of contact with the justice system. Of additional concern, and despite increased awareness, many adults with autism remain missed or undiagnosed, and..."
Whereas, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has been an international leader in the fight for individuals with autism. Under the Department of Public Welfare, the Office of Developmental Programs was created along with the Bureau of Autism Services. And whereas, Philadelphia has been recognized as one of top five cities in America to live for people who have autism. It is the home of cutting-edge research, experimental studies that identify best practices and inclusive approaches to support individuals living with autism, and expand their mainstream opportunities, contributing to an enhanced quality of life for individuals with autism and their families, and..."
Whereas, Terry Matthews, a mother of a son with autism, and founder and CEO of Jaden's Voice, a Philadelphia-based nonprofit designed to meet the needs of underserved families impacted by autism in the Philadelphia area, is dedicated to improving access and quality of services and supports for families impacted by autism. And whereas, Jaden's Voice is comprised of two distinct programs. Jaden Care Program addresses the physical and support service needs for children and families living with autism. And Jaden's Family Care Program provides advocacy and outreach services for families through the support groups and educational opportunities for parents and caregivers, and..."
Whereas, Dr. Craig Newshaffer, Lindsay Shea, Dr. James Connell, and Dr. Jennifer Plum of the AJ Drexel Autism Institute at Drexel University, through support from the Lurie Foundation and the Philadelphia Eagles, have demonstrated their commitment to improving access to information and services via their mobile resources and education for Autism and Community Health Reach Van, which will provide mobile outreach specifically targeting individuals and families in underserved and underrepresented communities. And whereas, Drexel University's professor Diana Nicholas and her team of students, Maureen McMenamin, Miguel Vargas, Fay Leff, Grace Lamb, Alexis Siriani, and Yoshi Takeo from the Antoinette Westfall College of Media and Design, ensured the Mobile Reach Van accounted for special interests, sensitivities, and needs of individuals living with autism, with necessary storage space for outreach materials, and the capacity to allow clinicians to conduct assessments. Now therefore be it...
Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Philadelphia, recognize April 2014 as Autism Awareness Month, in honor of individuals living with autism, their families, and those working to improve the quality of life for the entire autism community. And be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Terry Matthews of Jaden's Voice as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Terry?
Chair recognizes Ms. Matthews for remarks.
I would just have one more comment on the census that was created by the Bureau of Autism Services. And I'd like to recognize that only in Pennsylvania are we creating that census data. Because at some point, when we were walking through the halls of Harrisburg, legislators said, "Well, how many people are there in Pennsylvania living with autism?" And you just heard the national statistic that it's one in sixty-eight. But let me give you a powerful visual. Because as I said, we tend to focus on children living with autism, but as I said, individual children grow up to be adults, and they spend eighty percent of their lives as adults. By the year 2017, when all the school buses stop and all the services disappear, there's going to be twenty-five thousand adults living with autism with no services in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Twenty-five thousand. There are also two thousand individuals living with autism that have touches with the criminal justice system in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that never should have happened. These numbers reflect the incidents across the United States. This issue has to be recognized, not only in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but nationally. These individuals need the services, and the infrastructure that's represented behind me here. Infrastructure is people. We have the most creative minds on the planet here in the city of Philadelphia. And with this Philadelphia Autism Project, we are going to continue to make a difference. And I give you Linda Matthews, or Terry Matthews.
I know who you mean. First and foremost, I want to give honor to God for this opportunity to work and operate in my purpose. It is... It is a great honor to be standing before you to talk about something that touches not only the city of Philadelphia, but the United States. I'm Terry Matthews, as you've heard. I'm the CEO and founder and mom of Jaden, which is the birth of Jaden's Voice. I work to enhance the lives of all children that are impacted by autism, but specifically our underserved communities. We are in need, serious need, of resources. You've heard all the stats that Councilman O'Brien has given you, but it is a sincere need that we have to act and do something now. I want to thank Councilman O'Brien for taking today to honor and recognize Jaden's Voice and all of the fellow councilmen and women who have supported me in our efforts and all of the events and organizational things that we've done throughout the city. Jaden's Voice is just one voice, but we're the voice of many. And I wouldn't be able to stand here before you. I don't do this work alone. Dr. Daniel Lee, who's on my right, give him a round of applause. He has been awesome, supportive, instrumental, in helping develop the programs that we can deliver to families that are impacted by autism. I also want to thank my partner Danielle in the back, who handles my everything, Maxwell Brown. More importantly, too, my folks here at Drexel, who handles our research. Our new partners now are Apple, the Apple folks here in the city of Philadelphia. And our mission at Jaden's Voice is to improve, create, develop, deliver innovative programs that will make a real change, a real difference, right now. I respect all of the research that's going on, but today, our kids need improvement. Today, they need speech. Today, they need behavior. Today, our families need to be motivated. Today. It's a right-now thing. So I, again, I'm honored to stand before you. Underserved does not necessarily mean someone's on public assistance. Underserved just means they're not receiving services or resources, or they might not have the additional funding that I was fortunate enough to pay for and get for Jaden. I joke and say he's going to get a Harvard T-shirt because at this point, Jaden is seven, and he's now speaking. But it took Harvard dollars, almost sending him, almost felt like through college, to get him to this point. And no family, no child should be able to go without in a country that we have so many sources, resources available, and free resources available, that our children should not be touched, no matter their ethnicity, nationality, where they live, who they know, what job titles their parents may or may not have. So we're here to make a difference, and we're developing programs not only for the city of Philadelphia, but our model is national. We have something called Jaden's Buddy, where we want to continue to create autism-friendly spaces, churches, daycares, the art museum. We just had a great conversation today about that. Anything and everything, because as Mr. O'Brien said, Jaden is autistic. There is no cure for autism, and one day he will be an adult. And one day, mommy won't be able to be his voice. So I hope that I call each and every one of you to action today, school districts, political officials, any and everybody who has an opportunity to help support us through funding, coming to our events. I ask you today to just stand up and help us reach our goal to impact as many children and families as we possibly can. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Counsel will be at ease. Thank you very much. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez, who presented a resolution recognizing April 2014 as Child Abuse and Prevention Awareness Month. With Ms. Vicki Melvin and those accompanying her, please join the councilwoman at the And joining the councilwoman, we also have Councilwoman Mills Brown.
Good morning. Want to thank everyone, many of my colleagues who recently participated in our legislative session at PCA, Councilman O., our soon-to-be Councilman Nielsen, Councilwoman Tasco, and others, offices who were present as we hosted elected officials in this very state-of-the-art, unique, best-practices facility in the 7th Councilmatic District. I'm truly honored to recognize and the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2014 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia. Whereas over the past 20 years, the Philadelphia Children's Alliance has advocated for a team-based approach, built cooperative relationships, introduced efficiencies into a system to provide rapid response and effectively change how abused children are served and cared for in Philadelphia. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance became a full member of the National Children's Alliance in 1992 and was accredited by NCA in 2001. Today, PCA not only meets all of the NCA standards, but is a national best standards model for peer agencies nationwide. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance exists to create a more effective and caring response to children who have been sexually abused and is dedicated to providing justice and healing for sexually abused children, working to protect victims, ending the cycle of abuse, and improving the quality of life of abuse investigations. The quality of abuse investigations. Whereas recently, PCA relocated its Philadelphia Safety Collaborative within the 7th District along with the Department of Human Services, the Special Victims Unit, and the District Attorney's Office. This facility allows for a more streamlined investigation and less traumatic experience for the children. And whereas this year, PCA is on target to see approximately 2,400 cases, giving victims an opportunity to go to a safe place, tell their story, receive support services, and begin the process of healing. And whereas April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and PCA recognizes this month by providing increased knowledge of the resources available to parents and caregivers to prevent child maltreatment and promote self-being. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance is the only primary intervention organization in Philadelphia, working with child victims of sexual abuse, and this mandate to increase capacity is driven by a critical need for PCA's services to help protect the children and their families they serve, so that children can quickly get the help they need to live safe, fulfilling lives. Now therefore be it. Resolved by the city of Philadelphia, we hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment in promoting healing and justice for victims of child abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring 2014 to Child Abuse, as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. In the city, we extend our sincere respect and admiration. This resolution was introduced by me and sponsored by all members of City Council. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Mel for remarks.
Good morning. My name is Molly Lineak, and I'm the manager of intake for the Philadelphia Children's Alliance. And with me is Vicki Melvin, the manager of Victim Support Services. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez for introducing this resolution and helping us bring awareness about our important work and the problem of child sexual abuse. April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, so we greatly appreciate receiving your resolution at this time. Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez has been a champion for PCA, especially as we looked for a location to co-locate, and since, we moved into our new facility this summer. We would like to really thank you for your support and constant recognition of our work. The Philadelphia Children's Alliance is a nonprofit organization that aims to provide healing and justice to child victims of sexual abuse by conducting state-of-the-art forensic interviews, providing victim support services, collaborating with other agencies, and leading the development of an integrated response. In August, the Children's Alliance finally co-located to a facility where we are housed with our partner agencies, the Philadelphia Special Victims Unit, the Department of Human Services Sex Abuse Unit, and the DA's office. We also have mental health services on site and will soon open a medical clinic en suite. This new building, known as the Philadelphia Safety Collaborative, has improved our working relationships and has allowed all agencies that intervene in child sexual abuse cases to provide a more immediate response to alleged cases of abuse. Relocating to this facility with DHS, SVU, and the DA's office was a dream come true for PCA. We have been able to increase our capacity, and this year, we're on target to serve 2,400 children. As the only nonprofit in the Philadelphia Safety Collaborative, PCA is proud of all that we have accomplished in partnerships with DHS and the Police Department. We could not have done this without the support of the City Council, Mayor Nutter, and DHS Commissioner Amory Ambrose, who all recognize the significance and importance of bringing justice and healing to sexually abused children in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Counsel will be at ease. Thank you so much. The next order of business is communications. The chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on April 4, 2014, I signed all the bills that were passed by Council at a session on April 3, 2014. And that on April 9, 2014, I signed all the bills that were passed by Council at a session on March 27, 2014. And I am transmitting herewith for the introduction and consideration of your honorable body, a resolution appointing Richard Goldberg to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution appointing Dan King to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioners of the Department of Public Property and the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a license agreement between Pico Energy Company as licensor and the city of Philadelphia as licensee for a certain strip of land located along the east side of the Schuylkill River between Christian Street and a point approximately 612 feet northeast of Christian Street to be used for an extension of the Schuylkill River recreational trail. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1617 John F. Kennedy Boulevard. And an ordinance authorizing the appropriate officials of the city of Philadelphia to convey substantially all of the city's assets, known as the Philadelphia Gas Works, together with associated liabilities, and in connection therewith, supplementing and amending certain legislation concerning the Philadelphia Gas Works, authorizing the city to enter into other agreements and take other actions, including but not limited to entering into an asset purchase agreement, execution of ownership documents and certain other instruments and documents, termination of the city's existing management agreement with the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation, defeats of bonds and notes and payment of related obligations, and entering into a service agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development to provide that proceeds of the asset sale affect a continuing reduction or elimination of existing or future pension fund unfunded actuarial accrued liability. And also an ordinance amending Section 3, 207 of the Philadelphia Code and titled sale of fuel oil by deleting current code requirements and providing for future criteria for the sale and combustion of fuel oil to be established by the Air Pollution Control Board by regulation, all under certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Decker, you have any other communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, sir. Next order of business is the introduction of bills or resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of myself, Councilmember Brown, Squillit, and Councilman O'Neil, I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Counselor.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Wawa on the 50th anniversary of the opening of the first Wawa convenience store and for Wawa's many investments in the Philadelphia area.
That resolution will be on today's final passes calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not introducing any resolutions or bills today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Counselor.
And an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code by revising Section 12, 1117, entitled Physically Handicapped and Disabled or Severely Disabled Veteran Parking, by allowing certain persons who transport a disabled veteran to apply for a reserved on-street parking space.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute delivery to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 16th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I introduce one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselor.
And ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1617 John F. Kennedy Boulevard.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
One bill, one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome, Mr. President.
A privileged resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the landmark United States Supreme Court decision-
States Supreme Court decision Brown versus Board of Education.
That resolution will be on today's final passus calendar. Change that, that will be on next week's final passus calendar at the request of the Councilperson.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute delivery to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled "City Own Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements They're On," situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will also be on next week's final passus calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Fairhill Street, Huntington Street, and Fifth Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute delivery to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled "City Own Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements They're On," situated in the 19th and 43rd Wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passus calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Annual Disparity Study and Participation Goals" by specifying the principal formulas to be used in calculating (1) the percentage of contracts awarded to minority business enterprises, MBEs, women business enterprises, WBEs, and disabled business enterprises, DSBEs, collectively known as MWDSBEs, and (2) participation goals for future contracts to be awarded to MWDSBEs.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Sigma Phi fraternity on the occasion of its 110th anniversary.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passus calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill this morning.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 3, 207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Sale of Fuel Oil" by deleting current code requirements and providing for future criteria for the sale and combustion of fuel oil to be established by the Air Pollution Control Board by regulation.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia Department of Public Property to construct or to maintain an accessible ramp and step encroachment located at 1201 North 61st Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the unit block of Lock Street from the intersection of Main Street as Kay Sekora Way and the entrance into Venice Island in recognition of the dedicated service and tireless effort undertaken by Ms. Kay Sekora to improve communities along the Schuylkill Waterfront in Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passus calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
A privileged resolution in solemn recognition of the week of April 27 through May 3, 2014, as the annual remembrance of the 6 million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust.
That resolution will be on this week's final passus calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill, five resolutions, one co-sponsored by yourself, and two co-sponsored by Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 7th Street, Arch Street, 13th Street, and Calhoun Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Little Flower Catholic High School for a girls varsity bowling team on their back-to-back Catholic League championships.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passus calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating the Saints John Newman and Maria Goretti 2013 through 2014 boys' basketball team on winning the Philadelphia Catholic League Championship District 12 Class AAA City Title and the PI AA Division AAA State Championship.
That resolution will also be on this week's final passus calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Constitution High School Boys Basketball Team, the Generals, on winning the 2014 PI AA State Championship and the District 12 City Title for the AA classification.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passus calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Richard Goldberg to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
And that resolution will be referred to committee.
And a resolution appointing Dan King to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
That resolution will also be referred to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilmembers Maria Quinones Sanchez, Janie Blackwell, Cindy Bass, Mark Squilla, Jim Kenny, Curtis Jones Jr., and Blondell Reynolds Brown, and signed by all members of Council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings concerning college admission and tuition policies of local colleges and universities for undocumented youth in Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on this week's final passus calendar, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. The next order of business is reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee of Streets and Services reports 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, will you please read that report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, the which has referred Bill Number 130529 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Brandywine Sierra Post Office to Construct or to Maintain Various Right-of-Way Encroachments at 2970 Market Street," and Bill Number 130952 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a One-Way Regulation on Marion Street from Hansberry Street to West Queens Lane, Northbound," and Bill Number 130954 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a One-Way Regulation on Conlon Street from North 21st Street to Campbell Avenue Eastbound," and Bill Number 140016 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 271 by Striking from the City Plan of Vacating an Irregularly Shaped Portion of Laurel Street from Canal Street to Delaware Avenue by Relocating the Southwesterly House Line of Said Laurel Street a Viable Distance Northeastwardly," and Bill Number 140018 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Changing of the Name of Wishard Street from 17th Street Westwardly and Northwestwardly to Allegheny Avenue to Lippincott Street," and Bill Number 140074 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Richard Lay to Construct or to Maintain a Private Pole, Electrical Appartnances, and Aerial Wire Over, On, and Under the Southfootway of the 3800 Block of Palatton Avenue for Supplying Electric Service to His Vendor Truck," and Bill Number 140077 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing with E. Vin to Construct or to Maintain a Private Pole, Electrical Appartnances, and Aerial Wire Over, On, and Under the Southfootway of the 3800 Block of Palatton Avenue for Supplying Electric Service to His Vendor Truck," and Bill Number 140097 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 2307 by Striking from the City Plan of Vacating Certain Subsurface Portions of 15th Street Between Arch Street and John F. Kennedy Boulevard, 16th Street Between Arch Street and Cuthbert Street, and Arch Street from 16th Street to a Point East of 15th Street," and Bill Number 140102 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 308 by Striking from the City Plan of Vacating Cypress Street from Broad Street to Watts Street," and Bill Number 140179 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a No Truck Parking Regulation on Midvale Avenue Between Conrad Street and a Point 1,000 Feet West Thereof on Both Sides of the Street," and Bill Number 140208 entitled "An Ordinance Legalizing an Existing Fence Encroaching on the Public Right-of-Way at 3301 Lester Road," and Bill Number 140210 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a Parking Regulation on 16th Street East Side on the Avenue to Chew Avenue." Respectful of reports that is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of Council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of the 12 bills that were just read into the record.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of Council be suspended so as to allow first reading. With suspension this day of bills, Number 130529, 130952, 130954, 140016, 140018, 140074, 140077, 140097, 140102, 140179, 140208, and 140210. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just... Councilman? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Mr. President, I'd like to be excused to take care of Council business. I'd like to leave my vote aye on all bills and resolutions.
Okay, Councilman. It shall be noted. Next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that all the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second and final passus calendar at our next session of Council. Mr. Decker, please read any other bills on the calendar today.
Bill Number 130955 entitled "An Ordinance Continuing the Chestnut Hill Business Improvement District in the Area That Generally Includes Both Sides of Germantown Avenue from 7640 to 8705, Certain Blocks of Streets That Intersect That Portion of Germantown Avenue, and Both Sides of Bethlehem Pike from 10 to 105, Approving an Extension to the Boundaries of the District and Continuing Chestnut Business Improvement District, Inc., a nonprofit, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Business Improvement District Management Association for the District."
Thank you. The Chair agrees, and this bill will be placed on our second and final passus calendar at our next session of Council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on our final passus calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers, 140286, 140287, 140288, 140289, 140292, 140293, 140294, 130411, 130768, and 140053. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you very much. Before considering these resolutions and bills on the final passus calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you wish to testify on a bill or resolution that is on the final passus calendar for today, I'd ask that you sign up, if you haven't already done so, to the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the Council. There's a device, it has a light. When that light turns green, it'll be your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we ask that you please conclude your remarks and adhere to the guidelines. You will have three minutes for your testimony. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please call the name of the first individual. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President of the City Council, and good morning, Council members. Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Blackwell on Resolution 140286 on the inequality that has become an issue of the national security. 100 million Americans live in poverty caused by the Wall Street money system. 100 million Americans, working-age Americans, will not have a full-time job. National production facilities throughout the nation are in severe decline. I can't even speak to farm and food production. 10 million families have been thrown from their homes by a colorable foreclosure process. These people, over 100 million, are no longer in the national discussion. Every day, the sequester Congress operates the Wall Street policy and enables the Fed's unrelenting unemployment, unlimited bailout system to operate the collapse of the national economy is the national security crisis. I ask the City Council to create the resolution urging Congress to rectify unrelenting unemployment and the accelerating collapse of the economy, enact national banking, fund the redevelopment of North America, activate the full employment policy as a national priority, as this is the only way to gain the stabilization of this great nation, the United States. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jihad Ali. Commenting on 140286.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Council President, and all the other distinguished members of City Council. My name is Jihad Ali. I'm here to give testimony on Bill 140286. And I'd just like to read that bill. It says, "A resolution calling on the City Council of Philadelphia to declare the need for all peoples of the United States of America to have equal access to opportunities and accept responsibility to attempt to rectify the unequal obstacles that exist for various populations across this great nation." The question I have for you members of Council, does this bill apply to me? And I ask that because I've been down to this Council numerous times. This, what this bill is saying, I've lived my life, my adult life, fighting for people from my community, particularly African-American men. When I come to this Council, most of the time, I do get respect, and it's not just a black-and-white issue. I can count on respect from Councilman Heenan, from Councilman Kenny, from O'Brien, all the other councilmen. I can count on respect. My Councilman, Councilman Jones, he has my back 1,000 percent. You, Council President, you have always respected me. You've never used your power to suppress me. You've never, you've never said anything or through an intermediary to get back to me about anything that you didn't like the position that I've taken. You've always let me be a citizen. But reading this bill, now, there's a, the number of you is supposed to be 16. Now, I understand there's 17, one missing, but there's an 18th Councilman walking around in this city. He's the Councilman that used to be in one of these districts. He waited a year, and now he's back as a Councilman lobbyist. And I had the, you know, my mother used to say, "If you wait on God enough, he'll take care of you." Well, God took care of me today. He took care of me today because he gave me this bill to speak on. Because what happened to me yesterday, I went to oppose a bill for some citizens in this Philadelphia who couldn't go downtown. So I went down there and I spoke on their behalf. But this 18th Councilman, he takes a position to say that I can't speak for people. Now, he's a paid lobbyist now. He goes up to Taoga. When he was up at Taoga, thank you, Councilwoman Bass, for stepping up for me. When he tried to go up there and hurt district and say, "Well, Jihad Ali is a troublemaker because he stands up for black men and black women." He's a troublemaker. Well, Councilwoman Bass stood up for me, and I thank all you that stand up. But that's what this bill is about, guys like, and women like me, guys just like me that stand up. And look, I get it that this bar separates the leaders. You are the elected leaders, but this side is the people, and I'm a person that stands up. And I thank you, Council President, all the rest of you that understand where I'm coming from. But this bill, this is all about people like me. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public comment session, and we will now move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140286.
A resolution calling on the City Council of the City of Philadelphia to declare the need for all peoples of the United States of America to have equal access to opportunities and accept the responsibility to attempt to rectify the unequal obstacles that exist for various populations across this great nation.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140286 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, 140287.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street address is 1233 Germantown Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that Resolution 140287 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140288.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the North Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address is 2554 North 30th Street.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
Been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140288 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140289.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street address is 3126 Page Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan again.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140289 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140292.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Point Breeze Urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 2325 through 35 Cross Street and 2330 through 36 Greenwood Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. Eyes have it, and Resolution 140292 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140293.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model Point Breeze urban renewal area identified by house number and street address is 1721 Tasker Street.
And the Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 140293 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140294.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of American Street Industrial Corridor urban renewal area identified by house number and street address is 1702 North Third Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiama Sanchez.
For the adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, 140294 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 130411.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising parking requirements for the Main Street, Manayunk, and Venice Island Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, and requiring the submission of a parking plan to the registered community organization in certain circumstances.
Thank you. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenly, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kiama Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco is voting aye. Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes of 16 and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 130768.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions relating to definitions of certain industrial use categories and regulations.
This bill has also been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenly, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kiama Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco is voting aye. Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes of 16 and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140053.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Springfield Avenue extended, 58th Street, Lindbergh Boulevard, 60th Street, Elmwood Avenue, 77th Street extended, and Cobb's Creek.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenly, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kiama Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco is voting aye. Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes of 16 and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolution?
A resolution recognizing and honoring Wawa Inc. on the 50th anniversary of the opening of the first Wawa convenience store, and for Wawa's many investments in the Philadelphia area introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Sigma Pi Phi fraternity on the occasion of its 110th anniversary introduced by Councilman Good.
Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution in solemn recognition of the week of April 27 through May 3, 2014, as the annual remembrance of the 6 million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust, introduced by Councilman O'Neil.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd ask for a standing vote in honor of the victims of the Holocaust.
Thank you. The members please stand. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the Little Flower Catholic High School for Girls Varsity Bowling Team on their back-to-back Catholic League Championships, introduced by Councilman Squilla for Council President Clark.
Thank you. I have to say, Councilman Squilla, you, quite a productive day. It seems like teams in your district have won every championship in the city of Philadelphia, with that I call on you for emotion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored that all these great champions in there, so it's, it's a pleasure, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Saints John Newman and Maria Guretti 2013-2014 Boys Basketball Team on winning the Philadelphia Catholic League Championship District 12 Class AAA City Title and the, and the PIAA Division AAA State Championship, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the Constitution High School Boys Basketball Team, the Generals, on winning the 2014 PIAA AA State Championship and the District 12 City Title for the AA classification, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Thank you. And this Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and again, another champion is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings concerning college admission and tuition policies of local colleges and universities for undocumented youth in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for the day. And are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Mr. President, I would like to speak on the resolution that we passed today, and that has to do with undocumented youth in Philadelphia and the opportunity for them to go on to college. There are approximately 1.8 million undocumented youth in the United States. About 65,000 will graduate from college each year, but 50% will drop out of high school. And of the ones that graduate, only between 5 and 10% will actually even apply and attend college. We don't know how many will make it through. This is in large part because of two reasons. One is because many of these students, even if they're valedictorians and, and high school honor students, they don't think they can go to college, so they don't bother to try. The second thing is, for those few that do find that they can go to college, they are, in most cases, charged a very high tuition rate. For example, the Pennsylvania state system of public education for the university, that tuition is about $6,400. But if you are a undocumented youth, despite having lived your entire life in Pennsylvania, even if you are in county, in state, you will be charged an international rate which is between $9,600 and $16,000, thereby prohibiting many of these youth to go to college. I'd like to adopt the slogan of the United Negro College Fund, "A mind is a terrible thing to waste." And I think it is, you know, one of the issues that we face today, that if these youth do not know that they can go to college, they don't try to go to college, but they remain with us less productive than they would be, and I think it is a loss for our, our city. The issue that we face now is there's about 105 universities and colleges in and around Philadelphia, but for those in Philadelphia, we'd like to know, do you accept these youth? Will you provide them a fair tuition rate? I have, in my prior life as an attorney involved with free legal services, taken young people to community college. And there, depending on who we meet, they may be accepted. The problem with that is, it's an opaque situation. Unless you know someone, you can't get the opportunity to, to be considered for, for college. And if you know someone, then you still are subject to the international rate. You may not be able to apply it, to, to be able to pay it. So I think it is, it is a critical issue for us at this point in time as a growing city, a city that is full and welcoming of all sorts of people, that we deal with this issue and try to come up with a, a policy for these private and public institutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
Welcome, sir.
Just a couple announcements. First and foremost, I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting Final Passage and Overlay for South Philadelphia, and Overlay for the South, for the second district, specifically South Philadelphia, but in this particular case, Southwest Philadelphia that regulates how we go about opening up auto mechanic and junkyards. There's been a proliferation of auto mechanic shops and junkyards throughout Southwest Philadelphia, and the constituents in that part of my district have been advocating to make sure that, one, that there's a balanced approach, and also a level of accountability in these shops opening up. And so I do want to thank all my colleagues for voting in favor of that particular overlay. But also, on this Saturday in Point Breeze, we will be having a Point Breeze 5K run-and-walk to bring awareness to those who are victims of pancreatic cancer, but also raising funds with the University of Pennsylvania to find research, to find a cure for those who suffer from pancreatic cancer. That's going to take place at 8:00 a.m. at Wharton Square Park, and so I encourage everyone to come out, participate, get a team, come out. And we're also going to be doing a health fair as a part of it as well. But also, I introduce a resolution that we will be voting on in upcoming weeks commemorating the anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education. And so, as we look at the state of education here, not only in our nation, but also more particularly in the city of Philadelphia, this evening I will be joined by Dr. Height, Chairwoman of Education, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, State Senator Anthony Hardy Williams, State Representative Jordan Harris, and a variety of different community leaders from the Southwest Philadelphia area in a call-to-action town hall meeting at John Bartram High School at 6 o'clock. We have seen the various incidents that have been taking place in the news recently regarding John Bartram High School, and so at least tonight will be an opportunity for the leaders on the work in partnership with those who, who represent the Philadelphia School District, but most importantly, the community. I also believe the community has a role to play in well in regulating the outside environment and being supportive of our, of our young people when they're coming to and from school. And so we're going to have the discussion, but also put together a plan this evening again at John Bartram High School, 6 p.m. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to say a few remarks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my way home, I had an opportunity to hear on 103.9, the town hall meeting that was conducted by 103.9, Lady B., Senator Williams, Representative Harris, and our own Councilman Kenyatta Johnson. As they struggled with crime and the breaking of the weather and what to anticipate for this summer, and I heard a lot of good ideas about what people could do, how they could engage, and I started to put my mind around what was the one thing that we could all do. And I want everybody that's listening and the sound of my voice to pick up a pen right now. And what we struggle with, you can be a good coach, you can teach your kids to pray, you can teach kids in school, but there's one common thing that we all can do to help curb the violence, to provide assistance to law enforcement this summer, and it is simply to join Town Watch. I don't care what neighborhood you're in, from Chestnut Hill to the deepest part of Eastwick, Winfield, wherever, you can become involved, engaged in Town Watch. And by not, and I don't, and again, I don't expect anybody to put a cape on and tackle drug dealers or assailants trying to victimize women with pocketbooks, but you can safely be an extra pair of eyes and ears to law enforcement to enable them to do their job. And they've made it easy for us, Mr. President. They've given us, you know, you ever see those T-shirts where it says, "No snitching"? Well, I'm at the age at the Mac machine, if I see it, I'm telling. I'm just telling you now. And, and they've given us convenient ways to do it. You can tweet information anonymously through twitter.com/philadelphiapolice. You can Facebook your information to facebook.com/philadelphiapolice. You can YouTube your information without putting your name out there through YouTube. You can text it, you can tweet it, you, if you are old school and have a rotary phone, you can call in 686-tips. You can do it on the web, you can do it in a car. It's almost like green eggs and ham. There's faceless ways to do this. And I would suggest that all of us consider joining Town Watch Integrated Services, and they're located at 1441 Sampson Street, Suite 200. If you want to call on that rotary phone, it's 215-686-1453, 215-686-1453. As the weather breaks, we can't keep our kids in the house, but we can do our best to keep them safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, over the past number of weeks, we've been dealing with this issue of custodial arrest for the possession of a small amount of marijuana. And as you also know, there's a bill that's pending on final passage that I've agreed to hold as a result of meeting with the CJAD, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, at the request of Judge Skipper Woods, who has began to put together a group, a small subcommittee to deal with, administratively, hopefully deal with this issue. But today, I, in the city paper, just published today, I want to quote, "For years getting caught cracking open a beer on the streets of Philadelphia was an arrestable offense. In fact, it was the only place in Pennsylvania where police officers were required by law to detain those who had committed very low-level crimes, sometimes for hours, just to issue a citation and a small fine. However, a recent court proceeding changed how the Philadelphia Police Department handles citations for similar, similar quality-of-life crimes known as summary offenses, like public urination, open container violations, and public nudity, God forbid. Once, what once involved a trip to a local district station is now handled in the street in a matter of minutes, like a parking ticket. The change came in 2009 after a state Supreme Court reviewed Philadelphia's non-traffic summary citation procedures at the urging of Police Commissioner Charles Ramsey. After the court's Criminal Procedural Rules Committee concurred that the city's rules were largely a waste of time, an order was issued that brought Philadelphia Police Codes in line with the rest of the state." This is a quote from Lieutenant, Police Lieutenant Kevin Long. "These are crimes we're looking to address immediately out on the street," said Police Lieutenant Kevin Long. "We're allowing the officer to deal with the problem and then go back in service within 15 minutes, as opposed to taking the individual into headquarters and then taking the officer out of service for two hours." It seems to me that the, the technical problems that have been quoted in the reason why we still need to take a person with two marijuana joints in their pocket into custody, put them in handcuffs, fingerprint them, photograph them, and put them in a jail cell for a period of time, only to have the district attorney decide to divert that individual to a, to diversionary program, the, the arguments that the technology doesn't exist for us to do this seems to fall quite flat, based on the fact that the police, with the concurrence of the Supreme Court, decided to make an arrestable offense that was required by state law at the time to a summary or, or a citation without taking the police off the street. Now, I'm not suggesting that anyone get a red plastic cup and go out and drink in public, or am I suggesting that anyone stand on the street corner and smoke a marijuana joint? However, why is one different than the other? If we can issue a summary citation for an open container of alcohol, which happens, I will say, much more than the, the ingestion or possession of marijuana, we can do it for that particular offense that was once required to arrest someone, what is the problem with doing it for those who are stopped, frisked, and discovered to have less than an ounce of marijuana on their possession? To me, I, my hoping is that Judge Skipper, Wood Skipper will continue her due diligence and get this done, but since 2009, we've been able to do it with people drinking in public. I see no reason why we can't do it with people either possessing or smoking marijuana in public. So I would urge that committee to continue to move as fast as possible to ensure that our- our young people do not have another opportunity to receive a site, to receive an arrest indication on their record, which precludes them from getting a job, getting into school, and having a productive life over this simple knuckle-headed, uh, app, opportunity to go and smoke a joint. I think that alcohol, public drinking of alcohol and the possession of a small amount of marijuana is basically the same, and they should be treated the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, Council President, I just want to follow up on, on my colleague's, um, comments, and I'm not really thoroughly, um, knowledgeable about the particular bill, but I do understand, uh, from the district attorney's perspective, you know, they don't want to lock people up with small amounts of marijuana, which I do understand because it's significant population of young African-American males, uh, receive records as a result of, you know, them having down-bag weed in their pocket and so forth. But I also want to make sure, uh, as we, um, explore this type of legislation and, and we move forward, that we have a conversation regarding, um, drug and alcohol, the abuse amongst African-American young men and young, young people just in general. Um, oftentimes, um, beyond smoking weed, some of these young men engage in smoking, um, something in the street known as wet, which is embalming fluid. And when you look at some of the crimes that take place, the wet is, um, intertwined with the marijuana. And so when you look at some of these shootings, some of these young men be bugged out of their mind based upon them engaging in a level of, um, drug use. And so, um, even as we move forward, um, as a city, and, and, and we definitely don't want to, um, have young men getting felonies for something, um, that is nonviolent, but also we want to pay attention to, um, the other side that's a real issue, uh, which is drug use amongst, um, young people. And that has a significant impact on the shootings, um, and the violence that we see because majority of young people, uh, who do engage in, in rather smoking weed or smoking wet, um, wind up somehow in some cases, at least from personal knowledge and knowing some of the young guys in the street that engage in these type of activities, is a result of them being high and bugged out of their mind. And so as we move forward, uh, you know, we take a comprehensive look at how we approach it, and if the bill does pass us and the young people are allowed to, you know, to get high on the streets, that we also have a, a contingency plan to look at, okay, to treatment that lines, that falls in line with the actual use. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. In response to my colleague, Councilman Johnson, I totally agree. No one is suggesting that anyone be urged to smoke marijuana on the sidewalk or on the street or to use it at all, as a matter of fact. But I will tell you that, um, it is harder to get drug treatment and to get yourself straight if in fact you have an arrest record on top of you trying to, to get yourself right. I will also tell you that through my research on this issue, um, there is a wide, wide, wide disparity between the use of alcohol and violence and the use of marijuana and violence. Uh, almost from my, from my conversations with many, many people in the know, uh, people who are involved in domestic violence are generally involved in alcohol, not marijuana. Most of the, the crimes and fights and, and other types of situations that result in the, and the over-inbibe-ing of alcohol, uh, creates a violent situation.